This is going now, I can't read it. Anything?
No signal.
Five six zero work? Oh.
Nope.
We are, we're on. There you go, okay.
We're on, Mayor.
Call to order, March 7th, 2019, Prescott Valley Work-Study Meeting. Items on work-study agenda are for council staff discussion only, no action will be taken on these items. Clerk, will you please call the order?
Mayor Palguda?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Grosseman?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
And Councilmember Packard?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you ma'am. We'll just get right into it. Item three, CAFMA Ambulance Chief Freitag, welcome. Oh, and I'm sorry, Chief Light, Prescott Fire.
So, Mayor, Council, we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. As you may have heard from Mayor Palguda and from Larry, we have had some stakeholder meetings recently in this area about ambulance response, and subsequent to the stakeholder meetings, Mayor Palguda asked if we would come before you this evening and give just a brief overview of where we're at and what we're working on. And because Prescott Fire Department and CAFMA work so closely together and we're seeing the same issues, we felt it was important for the two of us to be here and not just me in front of you this evening so that you can hear what Dennis has to say as well. We're going to set the stage with just a couple of slides about what the problem is, but then we're going to go right through that and talk about what we think the solutions are because I think that's the important part of it. But if I don't give you some examples, you're not going to be sure why we're saying that we need a solution. So, what we've been dealing with are ambulance response times that have been extremely extended, and the problem has been going on for several years. We've talked to Larry, and when Mayor Scoog was here, we talked to Mayor Scoog about a specific incident in Prescott Valley at the Sam's Club, and we'll mention that one briefly. But the response times continue to get worse, they're not getting any better. The certificate of need, and that's what an ambulance service has to have in the state of Arizona in order to operate, certificate of need in this area is about 30 years old and hasn't been addressed. I think you could, we can all agree that the population density Prescott Valley, Prescott-Chino Valley has changed dramatically in 30 years, it's not as rural as it used to be.
Yeah, just let me interject, just real quick. In addition to just the response times, one of the critical factors is the reliability factor. And what that means is the availability to make sure there is an ambulance available to respond, and that's suffered significantly over the past, well, I've been here four and a half years, and it's continually diminished as far as that reliability, and that's very concerning when you don't have an ambulance available to respond to 911 traffic because they may or may not be doing inter-facility traffic as well.
I spoke with Mayor Mangarelli the other day, we had a meeting, and he was in dispatch and PRCC, and the dispatcher turned to him and said, "We have no ambulances available." And he said, "What does that mean?" That means there's no ambulances available for any medical responses anywhere in the Quad City area. Prescott and CAFMA cover over 300 square miles and 125,000 residents, having no ambulances available really is not acceptable. In addition, there's no backup system because we only have one company up here, if anything happens, there's no backup. So what are some examples of some things that we've been running into? Of late, we've had five untoward outcomes in six months. Untoward outcomes means the patient didn't live. We had very extended response times in these instances, a couple of them, the ambulance never showed up. Our crew was working one of the patients for 41 minutes and the ambulance never arrived unseen. Those things are obviously problematic, these are extreme examples, but five in six months with four of them happening in 30 days and three of them, if you look, within 24 hours. And one was in the, or two were in the same family at the same address. It was an elderly lady in the morning, and then the grandson was so distraught because the ambulance never showed up, then he took his own life that evening. So, and extended response time to get there for that. We're filing as CAFMA 88 complaints for January alone for extended response times, that's any time, I've set the time as any time over 20 minutes in a densely populated area. There's no reason it should take 20 minutes to get an ambulance to a home in Prescott Valley or in the city of Prescott.
The one point I'd add there as well is, in addition to just the ambulance responding is, and a number of complaints from CAFMA, Prescott's a little less on the volume of challenges, one of the reasons being we're in the, kind of the sweet spot where the hospital lies and those kind of things. So when ambulance has become available, then, within our community specifically, it's much a shorter ride. However, that stated is an interactive system, that no Central Arizona Fire Medical Unit or no Prescott Unit can really work unilaterally through the system because, much like the ambulance company does, and they use system status management to move their resources around, we use a similar thing. We know in the denser populations, the likelihood of an event occurring is more problematic, so we move pieces of equipment throughout the day and night to fill those gaps, to make sure the concentration points of population within Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Chino Valley are at least covered with some degree of emergency response and first responder response. And like CAFMA, all the units that respond here are advanced life support as well, which means they can provide the same interaction, or same interventions and critical care that any ambulance company can provide.
So, just a couple of other anecdotals. We had, and our Engine 51 responded to a scene, it was in Prescott, they pulled up, they could see the ambulance down the street, didn't respond to the scene, they went inside, they looked at the patient, they called dispatch with secondary information, asked for a response time, they were told 30 minutes. The cabinet's response was, "I see an ambulance at the end of the street," and their response was, "We don't know, it's coming from somewhere else." The Sam's Club incident, that was in Prescott Valley when Sam's was still open, AMR showed up on the scene, they left, they didn't take the patient, they didn't take patient contact. We filed a complaint with DHS, DHS said, "Well, they never hit the button saying they were unseen, therefore, there was no violation." Our crew transported the patient to the hospital, so AMR filed a complaint against us for transporting the patient that they left unseen. YRMC's seeing similar issues, and the problems have really been magnified since January when AMR shut their dispatch center down here and moved them to Glendale. And what we're seeing is, is not unique to us, this is happening around the state, which is why you're seeing AMR lose so many contracts down in the valley, because they're not abiding by the contracts and they're not responding when they're supposed to.
In regards to the dispatch piece, first off, first and foremost, it was done unilaterally. I received a call on January 7th from the Regional Director for AMR indicating that they were intending and plan to close their dispatch operation out of Prescott. On the surface, I kind of poked around a little bit more and asked, I go, "So, this is being made as a business decision for financial purposes?" And the affirmative was offered to me. So I have no reason to question that it was a cost-saving measure, and I respect that, it's private enterprise and you have to make your bottom line. However, what it's done is created anywhere from a two to four-minute gap now when we have an ambulance dispatched. And what that means is, we even have some of the AMR crews that are locally held here and locally available monitoring our radios, yet it'll be two to four minutes sometimes before they ever get word out of Glendale that they're needed. And therefore, they, under company policy from what's been explained to me, don't respond as a self-dispatch. So they're very restrictive on that, and again, that's kind of the company's point and perspective, so I'd have to defer to them as far as what their rules are.
So, those are some of the examples of the issues, and again, they did that unilaterally, they never, Dennis specifically asked them to contact me and let me know they were closing their dispatch center up here, and they did not do that. We've talked about, we filed numerous complaints, we continue to file complaints, we've talked with Senate President Fan about the issues recently, trying to get some movement at the state level to get something done on our behalf, and again, we started with regional stakeholders. So what are we trying to do at this point? Well, what we're working on is, we're looking first at the CON. So the CON is a problem, I think we could agree that a 30-year-old CON that doesn't, isn't measured to current national standards, which is the 90th percentile, needs to be addressed, something that recognizes the density of population in the area that we live in today, not where we lived 30 years ago. So the CON definitely needs to be updated. We feel that, that the Quad City area, everything that CAFMA covers and everything Prescott covers should be carved out independently within the CON. Currently, the city of Williams, Arizona is carved out in the same CON as us and has guaranteed better response times than the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley, or Chino Valley. And, and we don't believe that is appropriate. We think that we all need to work together and petition the state that they need to update that CON and start measuring to the 90th percentile. Right now, one of the measurements is, you have to be there in 10 minutes 70% of the time, that's for 1,900 square miles, so it's very easy to skew the numbers and make it look like you're meeting your standard. Our data shows that they may be meeting it to the 70%, 70% of the time, but 90% of the time, to the 15 minutes, they're not. We also believe that, you know, given that there's no backup and AMR has a monopoly up here, there are no options. So when YRMC has a problem with their contract with AMR, there's nothing they can do as a private company, and there's nothing we can do as communities to force them to do anything different. We think we should all work together and put out a request for proposal seeking other private for-profit ambulance providers to submit bids to provide service in our area. The winning bidder would have to get their CON, and they would have to sign contracts with us that say, "We will meet these standards, we will be dispatched out of your dispatch center and we will," and they, the ambulance company would have to pay for it. They would use similar mobile data terminals that we use, they would pay for them, they would use automatic vehicle locators to ensure the closest ambulance is sent, and we would control all the data, something that doesn't happen now, AMR will not turn over their data. They'll tell you that our data is skewed and that it's wrong and that they're meeting their CON, well, we know their CON's out of date and they won't provide the data to show what theirs is, it's questionable anyways how they do that.
Yeah, in advance of the request for proposal, we're currently working actually on what's called a needs assessment. There's an NFPA standard, NFPA 450, which is a national consensus standard, so it's not required, it's not mandated, but it does provide a framework for what the service level is expected to in the arena for fire-based EMS as well as transport. And through that needs assessment, I think we're going to be able to identify key points for inclusion within any sort of RFP, if that's the, the direction that's kind of aimed towards, and that way we have a clear set of criteria that's measured against a consensus standard, and then it has a degree of added credibility. You know, if, a lot of times we get beat up a little bit, "Ah, it's just two chiefs whining about the ambulance service." I, I can assure you, I got a lot of gray hair on my head, I haven't whined in a long time, you know, I kind of leave that to my grandchildren. The reality is, I like to provide systematic problem solving versus a unilateral kind of knee-jerk reaction, I think we're in a good position to move forward.
Correct, and I would echo what Dennis said, I've been in emergency services now for 26 years, was a paramedic for 24 of those years. I know what good service looks like, I came up in systems with good service, I know what patient care is, and I know that data supports that the longer you take to get a patient to the hospital, the worse the outcome for the patient. And those are things that we're seeing, and I just don't think that's appropriate for this area. So what do we do in the intervening time? We've been meeting, we've been setting up meetings with DHS in the next month with elected officials, including Mayor Palguda, Larry, the city of Prescott, town of Chino Valley, as well as the county board of supervisors. So we, we feel this need, we need to work in a partnership to get this done because this impacts all of us. Honestly, because I'm, we act as your fire protection, unless we come forward and let you know what's happening, you likely wouldn't know, because citizens don't call you to complain, they call us to complain. When they file the wrongful death suit, they've, they tag the entire system, which includes us and AMR, and then they see what sticks. So there's a liability issue on our side as well. So in closing, just to close it out, we know what happened, we understand the untoward outcomes, we understand the extended response times, what we're really looking to do is engage our stakeholders, update the CON to reflect national standards related to current population and density. We think it would be advisable for us as a group to issue an RFP with the caveat, "The winning bidder must obtain a, the CON and must enter into a contractual agreement that is managed and that they're held to." And again, we have an upcoming meeting with DHS to put this forward. So those are, that's really where we're at, I, I think you see there's a significant issue. From the feedback Dennis and I have had so far, stakeholders believe this is a solid plan moving forward. I did reach out to Brad Fane yesterday, we talked at length, just to give him an update on where we were at. I heard he wanted to diversify some of his, his funds, so I recommended the Fane Signature Ambulance Company. He didn't, he didn't agree, he thought Rutherford would be better.
Hey Scott, have you got any examples of RFPs that have been issued by any other community in the valley, for example?
I do, we have three samples, so we have Goodyear, Glendale, and Scottsdale.
Okay, very good.
All of which in the last four months have gone away from AMR and moved to a different provider.
Mr. Tarkowski and members of council, and as well as that is the needs assessment, I had a privilege in a community I previously worked for to create a needs assessment, and I think it will very well dovetail to the necessities that are present up here.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, in September, the existing CON ends.
That's correct.
Which is the, the perfect opportunity, if not before, to go ahead and have community input, going ahead and letting DHS know that this service is substandard, inappropriate, and that at that point in time, that we would end up modeling our standards to what you see in Phoenix, or Scottsdale, or Glendale, or one of those places.
That's correct, yeah, and they may be able to do that sooner, the Bureau is looking at that now, they're also looking at national standards, trying to help us in that regard. Because AMR's standard response is, "We are meeting the CON." Well, the CON is not where it should be, so the idea that you're meeting the CON is not appropriate, and the Bureau has admitted that, they said, "Just because they meet the CON, doesn't mean it's appropriate in a densely populated area." They agree with me and Dennis that 20 minutes in a community like this for an ambulance to respond is, is not acceptable.
Counsel, you guys want to start with questions, or? I have a few. Sir, we've discussed some of these questions too, but I think it's important that the rest of the council hears some of the responses. What would be your response to, somebody say the fire department's trying to increase their empire, and just get yourself bigger?
I, I think the, the response to that is, if you notice, I didn't mention at all that the fire department is trying to seek a CON. What we talk about is looking for another private for-profit provider, so another private company that compete, can compete with the current private company. So it's private to private, it has nothing to do with the fire department providing or seeking a CON.
Yeah, Mayor Palguda, I'd add to that, you know, you have to do some environmental scanning, and the environmental scanning here, as I shared, you know, I've come from a community that wrestled with the CON, and I don't think the environment right now is the most appropriate. I don't want to say that is a nuclear option or short of a nuclear option because I think there's a lot of wiggle room in between, and again, Scott and I probably don't align exactly, I mean, we're individuals, but I don't think there's the, the interest or the immediacy of moving forward with the CON, and I'd add to that, it's a very costly endeavor once you decide to enter those waters.
Thank you. Another question I have is, hypothetically, if you were to wave your magic wand, how does this problem get fixed? Say you were in charge of every, you know, you were in charge of AMR.
Right.
How do you fix it?
I would dump AMR and look for another private provider. AMR's owned by a private equity firm, they were put up for sale about a year ago, a couple of years ago, purchased, they're going to be put up for sale again in 18 months. If we could do anything at this point, I would like to see another private provider up here who has contractual agreements, not only with us, but with providers on the Verde Valley side, as a backup to the system over here, and that currently doesn't exist. We'd also like to see a more robust agreement with ambulance services out of the valley. So the backup to AMR today is AMR in the valley, well, if they have a strike, if they have a reduction in services, whatever it is, then there, there really is no backup. The response to that at the Bureau was, "It looks good on paper, so we accept it." That's what they told Steve Rutherford and I. So, I think getting another private ambulance service up here that's not held by a private equity firm to provide the services is the best option for the community, and the sooner we can get somebody up here, the better off we're all going to be.
Sure. Councilman?
If I can maybe, you know, if we go through an RFP process and, you know, you have some degree of teeth within the RFP for contractual holding that, you know, we, we very well could face that they become the successful bidder. The difference though then is, you have some sort of firm contract, today we have no contract with that provider, so it, you know, I, I'd be a little bit, maybe a little conservative on Scott's point, you know, it, it could end up that they bid it and, and, you know, if they can deliver, so be it, we'd have to hold them very tight to the contract, but, you know, I, I shadow his opinion though when it comes to, not much has changed yet here, I don't know if the, you know, doing the same thing over and over and over again, maybe not just the wisest thing either.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, how would it affect the community as far as cost to individuals regarding a private service? Also, would the dispatch then be put back into Prescott if we have a private company up here? And would it reduce those times by those two to four minutes, which I know are critical?
So, to your first point, there, I'm going to let Dennis answer the first one because he dealt with the CON down in Yuma, so I don't know if those are set costs by the state, the state says you can't go over a certain amount?
Yeah, each year, the CON certificate holder files what's called the ARCR, which is the Avenue Revenue Cost Report. And based upon the revenue cost report, that's what kind of determines to the state what is considered reasonable for a transport. Here, off the cuff, it's roughly about $1,800, plus around $1,700 to $220 a mile. So, the costs add up very quickly, so to your point, Mr. Grosseman, it's really set by the state, there's very little to no local control over that.
So, in short, you really wouldn't see a necessarily change in the cost. As, in regards to the dispatch, because they would be operating in PRCC, there would be no lag time between when the 911 call was received, and those units would be dispatched because they'd be dispatched at the same time by the same dispatchers in the same location utilizing the same systems. And I apologize, your second question, I skipped one.
That was, that was both questions.
Okay.
But, just one other, weren't we at one point discussing getting smaller vehicles to handle more medical because they are more medical and possibly using that as a transportation to the hospital?
We weren't talking about using them as transportation to the hospital, although DHS has recommended that we do that, they were, we were looking at using type sixes and putting a couple people on them, and type sixes, you don't really have a transport capability. If we were to go the route of a unit that would be capable if it was absolutely necessary, that, again, that's what DHS has recommended, we have to see where that goes, but there's, if you do something like that, you're not talking about hiring additional people, you're not talking about billing anybody anything, there are no additional cost to that other than for the unit. And honestly, Phoenix Fire Department, Tucson Fire Department, Golda Ranch Fire out of the Tucson area, and Arizona Fire Medical Authority have all offered to loan us units to use in, in that capacity as a rescue, where if an EMS call goes out, our engine goes, we'll have a firefighter jump on the box, follow the engine, if AMR doesn't show up, we'll get the patient to the hospital, no additional cost to the taxpayers and no bills go out to the patient. It's not an ideal solution, but we, we can't allow additional people to be harmed or injured by these response times. At the same time, we'd really rather work through DHS first before we do anything like that, and that would only be a stopgap to get a private provider up here.
That's not sustainable though.
It's not sustainable at all, no, it, our, trust me, our personnel would not be very happy with me.
Sure.
Moving that direction.
Go ahead, Chief.
Laura, Ms. Nye, the one thing I would add to that is, you know, we collectively have thought contingencies as well. You know, there's some labor challenges with the firm that doesn't overspill necessarily from Washington to Arizona, being we're a right-to-work state, however, it's something that could occur too, and that's always a challenge, is what do you do if they just step aside? And both Chief Freitag and myself, you know, we have some connectivity throughout this state, and I think, you know, from a contingency perspective, it would not be very cost-effective, it's probably going to create some sense of burnout amongst employees, but we could bridge a gap until we could get a third-party provider in here. Or, by that time, you may be at a nuclear option.
I want to address something that you didn't bring up because you probably don't have data about it. January 1st of 2018, I required their services, I collapsed at the mall. I want to question the quality of their medical personnel. They improperly inserted an IV in my arm, infiltrated immediately, they did nothing about it. I did go to the Prescott Hospital, that little tiny distance cost $1,700, and I required treatment for problems they caused during that ambulance ride. So that's also part of this problem, and I'm probably not the only one that had that kind of an experience. It, it's shocking what the costs are, and yet, I, I hear what you said, Chief, they probably made this change because of the cost of doing business. I would like to see their books.
So would a lot of people.
If AMR was here tonight, what's their response to what you've told us?
They're going to tell you that the fire department's whining, that there are no issues, that they meet their CON, and that these problems are fabricated and that our data is skewed.
Okay.
And I would, as far as our data, and I, when I talked to the Bureau about this, I said, "Look, our data is based on our firefighter on the scene hitting the button on their ambulance transport form saying the ambulance arrived." I said, "So very, we, we don't have ironclad data." But, what he said was, "You're, you're showing that their average response time for the 15 minutes is actually 17 minutes and 56 seconds." He said, "Even if there's a delay in hitting the button, it doesn't explain three minutes away." And then there's some questions, as I stated, about when they're measuring their response time. For us, the standard is, and the standard nationally is, the response time is measured from when the call is received in dispatch until the, in, the unit arrives on the scene. There's some anecdotal suggestions that they're not measuring their response time until they actually dispatch the ambulance, and discounting the time in dispatch where they get the call and then send it out.
And back to Councilwoman Nye, one other challenge, especially in the provision of services, the licensing piece for their medics or EMTs is also managed by the state. One of the challenges we all face oftentimes is the continuity of care question. You know, the more hands you start passing off to, the more challenging it becomes, and, you know, it's kind of like the game of gossip we all probably played, at least I played in junior high, or probably elementary school actually, where you start with one thing and it morphs, and by the time it comes out the other end, it's a totally different story. You know, and also from, you know, the, the skill level in that, what we are experiencing is probably higher than normal turnover of the personnel. Part of that is, across that particular profession, it's probably very undercompensated as far as pay specifically, and, you know, if you can get by with paying $15, that's what you pay. And when the valley's paying $20, $25, we get them locally right out of YC or other community colleges, they get their foot in the door, opportunities present themselves elsewhere, and they step aside, so it's a very continuous spool of people coming in and out.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I would also state that, again, we're not the only ones seeing this, AMR's lost the entire West Valley. AMR's lost the entire West Valley in Phoenix, and they had contracts with those cities, and they were not abiding by those contracts. And if you look up, if you Google AMR and you look at the issues, you're going to find the exact same problems in San Diego, California, San Jose, California. You're going to find at least two communities, one in Colorado, one in Northern California, where they hung a sign in the door and said, "Hey, we're gone. We're not doing this." And they left.
Sure.
And those things are problematic, obviously. Extreme, I don't think they would do that up here. But the fact of the matter is, what we're bringing before you, these are just common issues that happen throughout the state of Arizona with this company, as well as the other states that they service, and their response is always the same. And the fire department's making this up, and they won't turn over their data to anybody. Because when they do, and somebody does get their data, it shows need for another provider to provide service.
So I'd like to touch on that part. So they don't turn their data over to DHS either?
They tell DHS whether they've met their CON or not. I don't know how much data they actually provide specifically.
Yeah, they don't, they summarize their data, and from that point, they provide their metric as to whether they're meeting or not meeting.
Sure.
Very rarely is their, what I would say is their raw data independently analyzed. So whatever they tell, it appears to be the truth to DHS, so they don't do any further interrogatories.
So I know it's hypothetical, and you can't say for sure, but somewhere in the AMR world, is there, you know, a phone book of, hey, on this day, this call, dispatch at this time, we arrived at this time? Is that information out there somewhere?
Should be, yes. Yeah, absolutely should be. But trying to get it from...
Isn't it required by law?
For a private company, yeah, they keep it, and then they, it can be subpoenaed in court.
Sure.
But not by us.
Right. The concern is, of course, the residents of Prescott Valley and the services that we are providing them. Is there a way staff could reach out to AMR and give them the opportunity to come and give the same presentation on their side with...
Certainly, and we have a meeting scheduled in a week and a half from now.
Sure.
Where AMR has gotten ahold of us, and they want to go ahead and have the conversation. But I think it's abundantly clear that an outdated CON needs to be fixed, okay? And that's on schedule to happen sometime between now and September. Okay, we are now in urbanized area versus, how many years ago, 30 years ago?
30 years ago.
Okay, 30 years ago, that was a different world. Okay, number one, that gets fixed. And then that would apply to what has happened down in the valley, where they have encouraged competition.
Yes.
Okay, so what would be the ideal world? Having two ambulance services here that are dispatched based on proximity to the call and whoever has the nearest ambulance. It's real simple. When you have competition, which they've discovered down in the valley, then you don't have to worry about what you've brought up concerning labor disputes or any of those other kinds of things. Competition works, so it would seem to really be a great solution to work towards. Has the meeting with the DHS Assistant Director been set yet? I know that the mayor's copied in on that.
Yes, yes. It was set, and I need to get you a copy of that email as well. They sent it to Leah, thinking it could get to both of you.
Okay.
Through there, so that she has it as well, the date, as well as the address and everything. And you're welcome to write down with us.
And it would probably make some sense to have a meeting of the participants for that meeting in advance of the meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to be clear, down in Phoenix, the contracts that AMR lost, they're out of the game, correct? They're not dispatching simultaneously with another dispatch?
That's correct. They can be, they're a backup down there, so they can be a backup in that area. But they're just not the primary 911, because the primary contract is held by the other ambulance service.
Okay, thank you.
When you say that there are the other services that we could also choose from, do you know about how many other servers there are?
There are not many. So there's one in the Verde Valley, it's a not-for-profit ambulance service, but it is privately owned. And then there's Guardian Ambulance out of Flagstaff, it's run by a hospital. But really, there's only four large providers in the state, and that's AMR, Maricopa Ambulance, Verde Valley Ambulance, and Guardian. Most of the smaller providers are owned by either AMR wholly, or they are owned by people who are higher up in management with AMR. So they've got a pretty good foothold. I will say to the RFP point, AMR's been trying to run legislation at the Capitol this year to block our ability to put out for RFPs, because they're losing, my opinion, because our attorney always tells me I have to say that, is that they're losing the contracts.
I know your attorney for the rec.
Yeah. What I think they're doing is they're, they're losing the contracts, so they want to take it out of Mr. Tarkowski, Mayor Paguta, your hands or our hands to be able to say, "We want to look at a different vendor." The bill was killed, they had a stakeholder meeting, only AMR supported it. The bill got killed, but they're going to bring it back on a striker. We just don't know which bill it's going to be that they're going to use as the striker. So I have advised President Fan to be, to look out for that bill coming forward. And I know the, I know which lobbyist is going to be running it, so.
Awesome, thank you.
So I'd like to just remark to what you just said in regards to that. They want to take it out of our hands? Well, what is our job? Our job is to take care of our communities. And if our people are passing away because of their lack of service, then, I'm sorry, we need to look elsewhere. And we also need to have a backup in the sense that we can't just have them alone, you know, if for some reason we can't at this time just have, we need to have something, we need to have some kind of a move forward, you know, not just, we know what we've got here, and it's not good. And our business is our people, our community. That's why we're all here. People can't die just because we're not getting there. And money, that's really alarming to me. So they had a station up here where they transmitted calls or something, and they closed it down. Is that what I understood?
That's correct. It used to be up on Iron Springs Road within the community of Prescott.
Well, it's very sad these days, because I see us as a country, everything gets, people are getting pushed away because of money. Everything is about money. You know, people are why what's important. So I don't appreciate the concept of closing down the station up here because they need to save money. So are we their priority, or is the dollar their priority?
Councilwoman Mallory, just, I would just kind of capture all that with my experience on February 21st. The city of Prescott opted to stand up an emergency operations center primarily because, frankly, we didn't do the best job on New Year's Eve, and we learned a lot of lessons. But in response to the snowstorm, one of the things we did on the front end was do a lot of planning. And I engaged with Lifeline Ambulance, local representative was Pete Como. And the morning of the 21st, and again on the 22nd, I called him each morning, "How many ambulances do you have?" And even getting a definitive answer was very difficult. Well, we have two that are all-weather capable. We have, I believe we have 13, but usually about five or six of those, maybe more, would be conveyed to interfacility transport. So now you're looking at a service area that extends from Williams to Wickenburg, covered by five to six ambulances, if they had all 13, with the balance of them out on interfacility transports. It's, you know, we struggle all the time with just the geography here because of the distance between points. That's a lot of ground to cover, considering the city of Prescott alone staffs five engines, and I believe CAFMA staffs 10 in a much smaller square-mile area.
Well, when you're reaching out to them and their plan sounds kind of vague, that's pretty alarming. And I don't think that we should, we definitely need to look forward into this, we need to be proactive on this. We truly do. If our citizens are passing because of lack of service, we need to pay attention.
And Councilmember Mallory, and counsel, and to Mr. Tarkowski's point, every vendor that the town of Prescott Valley works with has a contract. And if that vendor is not holding to the contract, if they're not doing the job, you can look for another vendor to do the work. And I think what we're proposing here is ultimately, we fix the CON, but we get a contract with the vendor that holds them accountable. And if they don't do the job, then we, we have the ability to get someone else to do it. Today, we don't have those options, and the Valley does, and we think we should be afforded the same opportunity as the rest of the state.
Sure. Anything else?
I just want to echo pretty much what's already been said. The town doesn't have the contract, but it's our citizens that are in danger. And we support you, we urge you to be strong, determined, and get the best outcome that we can protect the citizens of our communities. Nothing else is acceptable. And I know you don't need that speech. I know you feel the same, but I'm saying it because I want you to understand how strongly I support this being handled.
I appreciate that. And I'll let the council know that in my response to the state, when they questioned why we transported the patient that AMR left on the scene, seems pretty obvious, but I told them, I said, "This is not the first time we've transported a patient to the hospital on a fire engine, and it won't be the last. The patient comes first, and you're not going to be able to stop me from doing that." So we don't like to do that, and in some of these other instances, there's no way we could, because we can't do CPR in the back of a fire engine. But it really puts a lot of strain on our crews, and it's hurting the reliability ratings in our three core fire stations in the heart of Prescott Valley because of these response times, and we need to be wary of that as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Item four, Presentation of Victims of Crime Act, Sergeant Jason Kaufman.
Mayor, members of the council, town manager, thanks for having me tonight. It's a real pleasure and honor to be here. Thank you very much. Tonight, I'm going to talk you about one of the units that I supervise. It's the Victims of Crime Act unit. They specifically assist and help every victim in our community. And 80% of it's funded by the United States Department of Justice. So I'm going to talk about the program. We got a short video to show you what kind of services we provide and how we provide them. And I'm going to introduce to you Tracy Skorden, Bob Stewart, Murray Obers, and Nikela.
Gil.
Gil. Lieutenant Scott Skedl. So as we get into this, just watch, and if you have questions, follow, put them out there. So Crime Victims Fund, established 1984, primary resources, sources of revenue, essentially Department of Justice. Forfeited appearance of bonds, special forfeitures and collateral profits of crime, special assessments from ranges, $25, individual committable misdemeanors, $400, corporations and victim felonies. Also funded by gifts, donations, private parties, as provided by the United States Patriot Act 2001. Victim of Crime Act 1984, crime 1984 sentencing was the only means for a victim to obtain justice and maybe some restitution. After 1984, Victims of Crime Act passed, Congress provided victims with the means for healing, economic assistance, information on how to participate in the criminal justice system, and ways to provide victim safety.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Need to talk into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
So that it could be going out to all of our audio.
Yes, sir. The main point of VOKA is to provide our victims with safety and resources and help them get closure. Being a victim is awful, as we all know. Every one of us been a victim in our life at one point or another. But we need a resource, and we have that resource here in Prescott Valley, and that's our unit. That's what Bob and Tracy's provide, and that's their, that's their job, and God bless them for it. VOKA summary, where does the funding come from? Department of Justice, federal courts, collected fines, assessments, forfeited bonds, and forfeited profits from crime. These funds provide the money for Crime Victims Fund. Who gets the money? Hmm. How the funds are distributed? These funds are from the federal government, they go through the Department of Public Safety, as we know as the Arizona Department of Public Safety, through the Prescott Valley Police Department, and pay 80% of project costs to include salaries and a car. They provide a car for us, as well as gasoline and maintenance. The grand award, when did the Prescott Valley Police Department receive this? First received the award in October 2015. Initially, there was one part-time victim assistant. Now we have full-time staff, which is 80% paid for by the DOJ. Victims of what types of crimes? All crimes. Every single crime that one could occur in Prescott Valley, we provide resources for those victims. Whether it's a part-one crime, which includes homicide, rape or robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, arson, human trafficking, commercial sex trafficking, human trafficking, involuntary servitude. Part-two crimes, those include assaults, forgeries, frauds, embezzlement, weapons carrying, possession of weapons, illegal possession of weapons, liquor laws, disorderly conduct, sex offenses, except for rape, prostitution offenses, vandalism, and misdemeanors. What does a victim assistant do? This is specifically what Bob and Tracy's do 100% of the time. They review reported offenses and crimes, they contact victims by phone, by email, by letter, and in person. They assess needs of victims, they help with resources to recover, such as emergency funds to repair damage up to $250. That could include windows, locks, doors on houses, a broken window on a car, assist victims to comprehend their rights. You can explain some of their rights, but actually, take the time to sit down with them, explain to them what their real rights are. That's true caring. We are servants, and they are true servants to our community. They're not police officers, but they're retired police officers, and they benefit our police department and our town in an awesome way. They accompany people to court and to provide support, emotional support if they need it. We also have other resources to provide support, but for our community, Bob and Tracy's do that. They assist with protection orders. They'll walk people through the process, why the process is necessary, if they believe it's necessary, if they don't. They provide suggestions, they do not provide legal advice, just throwing it out there. Mr. Stevens, right? And they listen. And being a listener, being a good listener is really important, as we all know. Arizona Department of Public Safety Attorney General's Office, this is a victim's rights that every victim in our community gets. They actually receive this, it explains it to them. But reading something and actually being explained to it are two different things, because we have visual learners, and we have auditory learners. Well, we provide both services, visual and auditory. Who, what, where, and how. Essentially, all this stuff gets sent down from felony charges through the court system, through the trial process. And when we have a victim of a crime, we have Bob and Tracy's here in Prescott Valley, We provide help, support, advice, and guidance and assistance. And this video, we just came up with it. Tracy, can you come up here real quick and explain this video? Did you put all this effort together, to get this video together, to raise this money? Through Cable One. Ladies and gentlemen, Tracy Skorden. That was a welcomed hug.
That was consensual. We had some money we needed to burn, and so we were trying to come up with a way that would be the most beneficial for the community. So what we did, we partnered with Cable One and came up with a battle plan to, one, spend some money, but two, to use it in such a way it would educate the public. So I recruited Amanda Toddin to star in our video. I believe it's eight seconds, it's pretty short and sweet, but it comes across very sincere. And so what happens is, we, with Cable One, we had them set up what are called geo fences around our jurisdiction, especially apartment complexes, high-population areas. And so when people get on the computer and they query, for instance, domestic violence, assault, restraining orders, they will have this pop up. There's a whole bunch of information, but this video also will pop up. So that's how this came about. Thank you.
Hopefully, place is advertised.
The anticipation is killing me.
Me too. Because we tried it out before we started this.
I've done that before, and it still didn't work.
After something happens, please remember, you are not alone.
The Prescott Valley Police Department offers extensive resources to aid victims of domestic violence.
We are here. We care about you, and we can help.
For more information, please contact the Prescott Valley Police Department Victim Services Division.
Does council have any questions for Sergeant Kaufman?
Questions? I have answers. And if not, I have resources.
Do you guys, do you cover fraud? Is that also, I know a lady, an eighty-year-old lady, and I've just seen this this afternoon, got a call, browbeating her to give them their social security number. If they didn't, they would immediately stop their social security checks. And of course, the lady, even though she's 80 years old, had enough brains to think, why do you need my social security number if you're going to stop it? But do you look into stuff like that? Because that's awful, man. That is awful, picking on the elderly. I know I'm elderly, so.
You're only as old as you think you are, Mr. Packard. So, yes, we not only assist them if they're defrauded, we assist them with shutting down accounts or stopping funds from going through banks. But we provide those resources, and we let these people know that there are scams out there, and we advertise this stuff so other people aren't scammed. And then, we take a police report. We try to follow up the best we can. We also notify federal agencies like the FBI and Department of Homeland Security. We provide victims' rights and try to get these people that are victimized their money back. In some cases, they actually go to Walmart, utilize the Western Union, and send the money out. In some cases, I've seen $40,000 sent out to people, which winds up in another country like Africa or South America, and then we're unable to ascertain the money back. But in some cases, we can help them get their money back.
Jason, how active is sex trafficking here? Because many citizens don't realize that we are also victimized by that.
We do have sex trafficking in this community. We do have a bunch of sexual exploitation that's taken place. My unit does conduct sexual stings regularly in this community and in the state of Arizona, and we do arrest violent predators throughout the state of Arizona. Since I have been assigned to the unit, we've completed five sex stings, and we arrested 20 felons for sexual exploitation of minors, not only in Prescott Valley, but in the Prescott areas in Yavapai County. And those people will receive long, lengthy sentences, probably the rest of their life.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work you're doing, and I know it must be very, very tough on you, but to know that the people that are victims aren't going through it alone is so precious. So, thank you so much for all you guys do.
Thank you for allowing us to do it.
You, I know that you go out into the community. I know we've had traces at one of my organizations. They've come out and they've done a talk on scams and fraud and, you know, basically senior alerts to let us know what's going out there. So, I think it's important that everybody out in the community know that if you have an organization and a group, or even if you have several homeowners on a block, part of a block watch, and you want to have one of you come out and talk about, you know, what's available to them as a victim, that you will go out into the community and do that. So, that's an important feature of what you guys do. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that, without going into much detail, I had an incident on Monday night, and I called the police department, and you guys helped a friend of mine, and you helped me as well when I called. And it was a hard call, but you know what? You were there, and you have great resources, and...
We have the best.
You do. You absolutely do.
Because we are the best.
Yes, I agree. I absolutely agree with you. Yes, you are the best. That's why I called you. And I want you to know that, you know, she is doing wonderful.
Good.
Because of the resources and the help and the caring that goes on in this community. I just really love our town.
So do I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Teak? Awesome. Well, thank you again for having me. Appreciate it. Bob and Traces, my hat's off to you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the deputy chief, James Edelstein, over there for allowing us to do what we do. Thank you, James.
Thanks, Jason.
Have a nice day.
Nothing like being humble.
Item number six, discussion G-Prep, Mr. Tarkowski. I'm sorry, number five, Judge Carson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight for an update of the court security project, and I'll just get right into it. There's a couple of things that we've already been able to complete. We already have the walkthrough magnetometer. I actually have it in the courtroom. I have two handheld magnetometer ones. We actually have those in the possession right now. I've made arrangements with the security company, Capitol Guard and Patrol. We're going to have what I'm calling a soft start for them for March 18th, 7:30 in the morning to 11:30, kind of to get them accustomed to our location and kind of let them see what goes on. And that's a slow day. I don't want them to start on a busy day. So, hopefully, that'll go well. They'll learn our situation. I'll learn theirs, and so I'm looking forward to that. There's a number of things that are in the works and hopefully will be completed by the end of the fiscal year. That's what I'm being told. One is cameras. Casey Danner and Bill Osborne are working on that, and I understand the whole camera system for the government buildings being worked on, and the court cameras are being worked as part of that. I understand they're talking about either wireless or connecting, and they may do a combination of both in accomplishing that. Another area is gun lockers. Josh Newsom with the building maintenance, he's identified several different vendors. I've talked with him about checking at Prescott Court, because I went in there recently, and oh, gun lockers. And I said, check with them, see what it is they've used, where they got theirs from. So, he's checking with them as well, considering the options that are involved. His belief, they'll run us around $800 to do that. Ballistic material, I was told that's what this is. I wasn't sure what that was.
It's behind that.
It's behind that? What does this do? The front part?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay. It looks good.
It covers the other stuff.
Okay, so...
It's the pretty that covers the ugly.
Okay, very good. And there'll be ballistic material, which I understand is the same thing you folks have. It'll be behind the bench. It'll be behind the clerk that sits in the courtroom. Also, Josh indicated that in the front windows where the clerks stand, it's going to be down below. So, they're going to have the protection so it's not unprotected down there. And they've done the measurements on that, and they say it's really not a huge amount of material, so they seemed happy with that. And of course, in a cost situation, they'll find out the cost of all that and then get a date for it to actually be delivered. The court service windows, the glass that's there, going to be changed out for 1 3/8 inch glass. It has multiple sandwich layers of glass and plastic, which is called bullet resistant. Nobody knows that what's there now is, and so it's believed it is not.
It is not.
It is not. And then, actually, right now, the way that window was configured, there's about a four-inch space. So, of course, just put the gun through there and go to tam. So, they're going to change the pass-through so that that will not be able to be accomplished. So, again, for the protection of the clerks that are manning the window. There's going, there's an area where if you're entering the courtroom, right before you enter, to the left, there's a hallway that evildoers, as I would say, could be there, and the security guards wouldn't necessarily know. They could check, but then they go back, and then somebody's there. So, there's actually going to be a wall with a door built there so that that can be a secured area where the security guards don't have to worry about that space, and that's going to get taken care of. As you exit the courtroom in an emergency on what's really the southwest area, you go out into that hallway I just referred, and there's a double glass door there. I'm advised that that's not ADA compliant for the emergency exit. So, those doors are going to be replaced and installed by commercial glass, and there's already been obtained the amount, wow, $6,500. So, it's not cheap to do that, but that'll then have us in compliance with that, and a PO was done on that, I think today, actually. And so, Josh will be able to contact commercial glass and say, let's get it done, get a date for the installation. Those are the things that are going on, and I expect to have completed soon. I talked with both Josh and Bill Osborne, and they're very gung ho on getting this done. That makes me feel really good, and so I'm real pleased with the efforts they're making and the progress that's being done as well. So, any questions or comments in regard to this?
I have no questions at all, sir.
No, Judge, all is well.
We're just relieved you have a court that should have the least response, but you can never tell. Your reputation doesn't bring that kind of activity in here, but I'm relieved to know you and your staff are going to be safe and aren't even have to think about it anymore.
All right, very good. And not just staff, myself, it's also the customers of the court. And, you know, with that being said, then yes, obviously, we have an obligation to do efforts to protect them in coming to court as well. All right.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Item six, discussion of G-Prep, Mr. Tarkowski.
Mayor and council, during our second retreat, there were some comments made as we were looking at the budget for the fiscal year starting July, at the end of June, first of July, for 1920. And we had conversation about economic development, and there was some concern expressed by some of you concerning the Greater Prescott Economic Development Group that was put together about five, six years ago after a great deal of effort to cause regional economic development. And the model that was being used that is very successful is GPEC, which is the Greater Phoenix Economic Development Group. They have been very successful by bringing all the communities in Maricopa County together to cause base job attraction. There's a similar group down in Tucson that brings in, and when I say base jobs, we're talking manufacturing. We're not talking commercial jobs that you would have in any of our stores. These are base jobs. So, with that in mind, we have had some conversations with members of G-Prep, and it appears that there is no appetite from a couple of those members to fund G-Prep going forward. With that, I am here to inform you of the lack of appetite to do that, but have also begun searching for some assistance to accomplish the same thing that G-Prep was set up to do, but with the use of Yavapai College and some of their resources. And so, with that in mind, I'm here to report to you that a couple of the primary partners for G-Prep are not indicating any appetite to put any additional funding into that organization. It's sad to report that. There was a lot of effort that went into it. The goal is very good, but they, there was a lack of ability going forward to actually execute what the goals were laid out to do. So, with that in mind, that's my report to you with taking your direction from that retreat. We are not looking at putting any money in the New Year's budget for G-Prep, but we will continue working forward to accomplish the same set of goals, just using a different vehicle to cause that to happen.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? I think we've already discussed it, so. Thank you, sir. Move on to item seven, discussion of police radio infrastructure, Deputy Chief Edelstein.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, community. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the police radio system. Really, there's three components to it, the infrastructure, the portable radios and mobile radios. But before I get to that, I want to kind of give you a metaphor, and this is one that I use as a field training officer. A police officer's radio is kind of like a scuba diver's air supply. And the way I think of it is, if, not the normal scuba diver that's got the tank on his back and the mask in their mouth, it's the one with the hose that's coming down. It's even more important, and sometimes it's fragile. You know, there's a connection between the boat that's got the air, that's pumping the air down to me. Maybe I've got the regular mask on. Maybe I'm a little deeper, and I've got the big metal tank on my head. But my point is that if that, that feat of air, and in this, in this case, that ability to communicate between myself, other officers, and dispatch is a failure, then that can spell the difference between my safety as well as the community's safety. So, just a quick explanation of, again, the importance of the system, as well as metaphor that I use to train and explain to my rookies why it's important to be disciplined in your use of the radio, but also to understand that if you go somewhere where you don't have radio, and back when I was training people, we had a lot more locations in Trout that we didn't have good communications from, how you needed to be aware of that, and how much respect you needed to give to your police radio. So, again, communication by radio occurs between officers and the dispatch center. Our sworn personnel are obviously using radios in the field when they are on traffic stops, when they're on calls for service. They are talking to dispatch. They're talking to each other. Sometimes, we are communicating with other agencies, especially on... Sometimes we are communicating with other agencies, especially on larger scenes. For example, the Viewpoint Fire, we might be communicating with CAFMA or other organizations that we are working with. Our non-sworn personnel, our community services officers, our animal control officers, they are also using our police radio communication system. So the infrastructure itself, there are several sites, the Glassford Hill site, which houses a majority of our equipment, the Granite View tank, which is near Home Depot, the Prescott Country Club site, and we have an antenna at the Prescott Valley Police Department. The other two pieces of the infrastructure are our mobile radios and portable radios. So problem identification is, well, it's not easy when it comes to radios, is what I have learned, having been either directly responsible for or partly responsible for coordination with our contracted provider for maintenance of our radio system. It seems that identifying the exact causes of things like outages, dead spots and static can be, can be difficult. We do have some solutions in mind that I will get to, but one of the challenges is that some of our equipment is more than 10 years old, with the exception of the infrastructure Granite View and Prescott Country Club. So the current maintenance for our system is provided by a contractor that resides in Flagstaff. As you can imagine, if we have an emergency situation in Prescott Valley and we have our radio system go down, which has happened several times over the last decade, it takes them a little while to get here. Currently, the system is a multicast system, and without getting into detail, that requires our officers, depending upon what area of town they're in, to sometimes switch between one channel and another. And if you can imagine, if I get out of my car on a traffic stop and I might be on the east side of town instead of the west side of town, remembering, first of all, to switch channels, especially on my portable radio, can be a challenge. But in addition to that, if the radio doesn't work at that point, it's, it's a, it's a big problem. And I mentioned the east and the north area of town. Those two areas, mostly down off of 69, near Quailwood, as well as north side of town in areas of the Viewpoint and Pronghorn, are still pretty problematic as far as spots where we have a lot of static or where we cannot get out on our portable radios. So a solution has been identified, and this is what staff recommends. Mayor Palgueta, you mentioned recently to come with something that would fix the problem. And that's what we've done tonight, thanks to our collaboration and partnership with CAFMA and the hard work of a lot of people within our organization. We've done quite a bit of research to get to the point we are tonight, when I can tell you how we think we can solve the problem. So first of all, step one is to bring in CAFMA as our maintenance provider and stop the relationship that we've had with our currently contracted provider. The second piece is to replace the portable radios. And the third piece is to replace the mobile radios, and that will occur over the course of time as new cars are built. These are three independent pieces of the solution. They're not all going to happen at once, but the two priority pieces are bringing in CAFMA and fixing the infrastructure because there are some issues with the current system that have been identified and need to be addressed. And then the second piece is to, to replace those portable radios. Those are identified as the two primary focuses for immediate attention. So the benefits of bringing CAFMA on as opposed to our currently contracted provider is a recovery of current staff time. You know, despite the fact that we have a contracted provider, we have had to have our community services officers learn a lot about the radio system and do some labor in order to reprogram radios. That time will go away. Currently, we only have one tech assigned under our contract with CAFMA. We will have two techs and a supervisor. One of their techs is here tonight, Tony Frazier, and their supervisor, Jonah Van Tyle, is also here as well. Thank you for coming. To speak to their service record, and we know this for a fact because we talked to the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, who has retained CAFMA for services in the same manner as we recommend, YCSO has not had a radio outage for over four years. So the service there has been excellent. Obviously, a local provider who has a stake in this community, like CAFMA does, and that collaboration that we already have with them, I think is going to be a strength in comparison of maintaining current practice versus contracting with CAFMA. Thirty-minute response time versus two hours is certainly an advantage in emergency situations should we have something unforeseen happen with the radio system. By the way, CAFMA assures us that their techs work very proactively to avoid those kind of situations where you lose communications. And if there are needed fixes or other work to be done on the system, there's plenty of planning ahead of time to coordinate transition of our personnel to a different radio channel or system while they're doing that work. Shared infrastructure is another benefit, and I can't apply a cost to this, but I can tell you that CAFMA has at least five sites that I'm aware of, and the opportunity exists for us to co-locate equipment. So obviously, we would share with them and they would share with us. And let me stop there for just a second and point out one particular weakness in our current system that CAFMA was able to identify, that this benefit of shared infrastructure might help us to solve, and that is that none of our equipment is currently climate-controlled. And although cold apparently doesn't cause a lot of problems with electronics, heat will. And I can tell you that coincidentally, a lot of our radio outages have heard, occurred, excuse me, while it's been hot out. You can see the price tag for the two. The only thing I can tell you is I think we're going to get what we pay for. So the first cost, and this, to be clear, is an annual recurrent cost for that contract. We just went over, $53,000. The second cost, and this is the priority one in the, in our proposal to remediate our system, is to fix the infrastructure. So you can see that there's about $40,000 to $80,000 worth of equipment. CAFMA's taken a look at things and they've given us a range because they're not exactly sure yet what we need, but by the time July 1 rolls around, we will know for certain. All of the batteries up there need replacement. That's nothing new, we were already aware of that. You're probably not aware, but the site at Glassford Hill is entirely powered, unless there's a problem with the sun, by solar power. So the solar panels charge the batteries, that runs the system. If the system crashes, then we do have a generator backup. There's a large propane tank up there that takes care of that. So we're looking at a total of $90,000 to $130,000 to address those infrastructure costs. So on to handheld radios, and I've already talked enough about the importance of those. You can imagine, a lot of the problems our personnel encounter, they're not in the car. So the most important piece of communication equipment that our personnel carry is their handheld radio. They're 12 years old, some of them are a little newer because we had to buy a few newer ones recently due to the issue that we can no longer maintain them. There's no parts available for our portable radios anymore, and they are not supported by Motorola. The only thing that we can still buy for them is new batteries, which is a good thing because, you know, as you can probably guess, just like your cell phone, batteries are the first thing to go. There have also been significant improvements in technology, and I can only explain it from my expertise, which is it's like comparing an analog phone to a digital phone. You know, the radio that I'm carrying on my hip right now is every bit of 12 years old, and you can imagine the jump in technology that's occurred during that time period. A low transmit power, I called it low, but just based on what one of the vendors tells us, there's been about a 1.5 megahertz increase in transmit power for handhelds over the last 12 years. I don't know if that sounds right, but I can tell you their spec sheets bear that out. So the power of the handheld radio to transmit has actually improved over the last decade. So that's significant when you talk about being able to reach dispatch and other officers from the areas of town that are farther away from our antenna sites. So we did field test radios. We've had Kenwood Harris and Motorola radios out in the field, and certainly Motorola's have outperformed the rest significantly. We were still testing two different models of the Motorola radio just to make sure we get a good look at the, the two available models that best fit the organization. And that's why there's a range of costs there from $250,000 to $283,000. I can tell you, I do hope to drive that number down a little bit more in negotiations with the vendor. Last but not least are the mobile radios. I keep forgetting to do that. Sorry. The mobile radios which are mounted in the vehicles, as you can imagine, those are not subjected to the kind of torture and abuse that the ones that we carry on our hips or our officers are carrying in the, in the external vest carriers are exposed to. So they are also higher in transmit power. So I think 20 to 25 megahertz versus what these are. We don't have a problem with them, to be honest. They're working quite well. The problem with them is that, again, they're not supported, the technology has improved greatly, but you can see the, the price tag to replace them all is $124,000. We are not going to spend that in one chunk. We're just going to replace old radios as we build new cars. So as I down an old car and replace it with a new car, we'll just buy a new radio for that new one and then auction off the radio with the car.
You'd be buying that radio anyway, right?
So in response to that question, if I understand correctly, no, actually. As we've built recent cars, we've recycled old, old mobile radios. So we haven't had that cost. It will be an additional cost of, depending on how many vehicles we build every year, probably $10,000 to $15,000. Other departments do depend on the infrastructure, so they, they have their own systems. Water and Utilities uses radios, Parks and Rec and Public Works, Water uses radio for some, some different purposes, not just communicating with each other, but they also collect information from water meters that way. So CAFMA is able and willing to help out with that as well. Apparently, I need to turn my clicker over to somebody else so they can keep up with me. Future issues, I did want to talk about this because I think sometimes we forget to look far enough into the future to anticipate what's coming. And one of the things I do think that will happen eventually is we'll annex more parts of town that aren't part of Prescott Valley now, and we'll probably start to grow outward a little bit more. And it might be something like a Quailwood or Amigas Estates that takes us into areas that we're not accustomed to. So when we first step foot in that new subdivision, so to speak, we might find that, hey, this radio's not working here. And so those issues are going to come up, and they, they may be unpredictable, we'll do our best to address them ahead of time. Another issue that is going to come, we, we may have to participate, depending upon how the state goes about rolling this out, but there is a digital radio system that the state is looking to roll out sometime, they say in the next three to five years, depending on who you talk to, it might not be for 15 years. The advantage of this system will be that a police officer could literally stay on the same radio station from Prescott Valley to Yuma, Arizona. And the advantage of that is, is that that radio station then passes to each dispatch center that's responsible for those different areas without the officer having to mess around with their radio. There are pursuits that go 120 miles or more. They don't happen often, but in those cases, that's a good thing. In addition, then that solves, helps to solve, excuse me, those inter-agency collaboration issues that we have when we try to send somebody to a different area of the state and they don't have any of their channels programmed into their radio. So that digital radio system will come, but I don't think we're going to really have to do anything about that and spend any money to accommodate it for at least 10 to 15 years.
Talking about it for 20.
And they've been talking about it for quite a while, thank you, Larry.
Yeah, the, the state has talked about that for 20 years.
Yeah, I've heard it for quite a while. So again, we have several representatives from CAFMA, we have their supervisor, their tech, I already mentioned, Chief Fryteck, thank you for hanging around, and we have Darlene Packard from the board. So several representatives are here supporting this effort. Any questions?
So does, I don't know if you know this or not, but does CAFMA have any spots that are blackout spots in our area currently?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm sure somebody can answer.
And would it be safe to say that wherever CAFMA currently works with their radio and it works well, would our radios work in the same spots if we did the transition over? Okay.
CAFMA definitely has a few challenges, but we've worked to fill those holes. Like Deputy Chief here said, we've got, I want to say, seven sites within Prescott Valley.
Sure.
Proper area to cover all the dead spots.
Okay.
So.
So you may have spots maybe out in Paulden.
Um, yeah, Paulden, building penetration can be an issue.
Okay.
And a lot of big buildings, so there, there are some, some issues. Not lying there, but we, we work to fill those holes.
Sure.
As best and quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd also like to inter, just interject, we are in the final stages of actually doing a, a major build-out of our radio system. So we're in kind of like the, a final testing phase for a major upgrade that we've been working on for a number of years, and we're kind of in the home stretch right now, which really fills in a lot of the area that can be a challenge. Most, a lot of it has to do with Prescott because we have some challenges in Prescott and our relationship with the city Prescott Fire, but also in the, out, the outer edges of the Prescott Valley city limits out towards Dewey. We're working on that and, and we're actually currently, like I said, testing it. So it's a major improvement that we're trying to accomplish at this time.
I just, you know, I, I just wanted to say, I thought, tonight, everything was fabulous, the way we've talked about so many different things. And in reference to the radios and what we need and the fact that we're all here in the same area and you all work very well together anyway, doing all of this stuff, and, and the fact that we are reaching out throughout our community as we work through safety, evacuation plans, all of these things. You need good communication, we need good response time when we need ambulance to come, we need all these things. And so this is wonderful that as a community, that we're looking at this, being proactive. You bring it to the community's attention, you brought it to the elected officials throughout the different towns and cities, and, and now we will all take measures going forward to improve our community and keep our citizens safe. So I really appreciate everything that you have all done to work together for the betterment of everybody.
Thank you.
I got a question. Regarding the radios and dead spots, is there a way to add some booster stations and is it possible to piggyback on cell towers and utilize the height of those? Because I know the radios are basically line of sight, so you have to be able to get past a lot of obstacles in the way.
We're, we're going to be introducing and improving a piece of equipment that Prescott Valley already possesses. It's called voting, and it puts receivers strategically throughout the, throughout the town to where when, when an officer transmits, it picks that receiver that has the best receive signal, and it goes to this machine and it, it will choose the best signal that comes in and rebroadcast it out. So yes, we are filling the dead spots in the areas. We, like I told Mayor here, that we have, we have a lot of sites throughout the, throughout the town of Prescott Valley, so we'll, we'll be able to fill some holes.
That's good to hear, thank you.
I think initially, you, you see the, the price tag and people automatically go, oh my gosh, it's a lot of money. And I think we, we sat down with a wants and a needs list, and if you were to put this in a certain category, this certainly falls into the needs list, you know? We can't really put a price on whether someone has their radio be able to get out or not. So bringing it forth with the, the solution, exactly what I said, is awesome. And I think now we're going to rely on staff to come forth with a, a plan to make the numbers work.
Working on replacing the radios, the handheld radios, and we, we have a funding source to go ahead and do that. But I'll be really happy, and, and anybody that's been on council for a while and coming to these meetings, about every three or four years, we hear about all these dead spots. And we've got a solution. And quite frankly, I hope this one works because it hasn't in the past. Okay? And we've had a solution. We had a problem in the country club, okay, well, there's a solution coming. Well, guess what? It didn't do it. And so for 30 years, about every three or four years, I hear about bad coverage. Guess what? The town is still in the same place. It hasn't moved. And so I would hope that this time, we will have the fix and we won't have the And so I would hope that this time, we will have the fix, and we won't have this conversation anymore about not having coverage. I really look forward to that.
Open pray.
No pressure, guys.
I just, Council, and I just want to make sure that it wasn't referenced during your presentation, but the importance of maintaining the current contract with Niles Communications for your support through June 30th. Because we are working on increasing our staff to be sure that we have the amount of resources needed to hit the ground running. But prior to June 30th, we will not be able to proactively or reactively do work for the town. We will be working on engineering the fixes prior to that time so we can, again, hit the ground running July 1st. But it is imperative that that relationship with Niles is continued through the end of the contract.
Go ahead, sir.
To Mr. Tarkowski's point, just if I could briefly, I understand where you're coming from with the fixes. Our VHF build-out has been on the table for probably 15 years now. We finally made a change in management, and in the last six months, they have taken what's been sitting for so long, and it's near completion. So I think we've got the staff today that works well with Prescott Valley PD, that works well together. They have very solid plans, and they're truly experts in their field. One of the reasons they can't give you an exact where they are right now is because they can't technically go in and touch somebody else's equipment. Because if they do, and then something happens later than that, other person says, nope, that was their fault. So we can't actually put hands on it. But these gentlemen have done a fantastic job for us in cleaning our systems up in a very short period of time.
Mr. Packard.
The old radios will work with the new radios seamlessly, correct, until you get them all together?
That's correct.
Now, what about a priority here? Say there, a site is out for CAFMA, and a site's out for the Police Department, and another one for the Sheriff. Is there a priority list set up on this? Who do you fix first, stuff like on the repeaters?
Well, I think that we can reasonably believe that the Sheriff's Office has got a very robust system. So if there's anybody that's going to have an outage first, it will be us. And I guess I could turn it over to you for a further response, but I can tell you, I think they will prioritize the immediate need. And again, knowing that when I talk to my peers across the county and I talk to them about having actual outages where we lose a channel, it's kind of unique. I've only heard of it happening in one other jurisdiction recently.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, I just wanted to say also is that as we move forward with new technology constantly, there's something we have to keep in our minds going forward, is that we're always going to be looking at upgrading. We're always going to be looking at having to change this or do that because this whole internet system and all this electronics, I mean, this stuff changes. As soon as they put it out, they got something. It's old, and there's something new. So something just to keep in the forefront. We will always be looking at having to change up things and move forward with technology. And I'm just putting that out there for the general public to understand. I realize that this is expensive, and it's a big difference, but at the same time, we are protecting our communities. And for me, there is no price on that because I care about people. I want people to be safe.
Thank you. I agree.
Vice Mayor.
I have a statement and then a question. The statement I want to make is that town of Prescott Valley has always been very wise in forming partnerships and outsourcing. This is an ideal partnership in this arena. So once again, it shows our wisdom. My question is a few, Deputy Chief. You made the comments that our mobile radios are 12 years old, and we have no parts for them. What other equipment are we in the same situation?
So regarding the radio system itself, it would be the mobile radios, which are the vehicle-mounted radios, and our portable radios. We cannot get parts for either of those with the exception of batteries for the portable radios.
Well, the time is now.
Any other questions? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, we're moving on to number eight, Contract Amendment. Jacobs, Mr. Wadsworth.
I'm actually going to cover two different topics, but they're very closely related. And so what I'm going to do first is I'm going to start off giving you an update on where we are on our well projects, and that will lead right into the discussion about the Jacobs Amendment. So as you know, we are working very fast and furious on a number of new well projects and two brand-new wells that we are drilling and equipping, one well that we had drilled a number of years ago that we are equipping, and then we've been working on other wells that we have been repairing or reactivating. And we started some of these new wells back in the summertime, right after, you know, we had the emergency declaration last summer. We started in with the new projects to get new wells online. And each of those projects does involve multiple design professionals and contractors to get them completed. And we have a need to expedite these projects in order to finish them before the peak summer demand this year. So the couple of new wells that we're working on, this provides you an update in general on where we are. The legendary well was the one that we had drilled 14 years ago, I believe it was, back in 2004. And so with that one, that one is actually under construction right now in terms of they are equipping the well, you know, the building, the stuff on the surface, essentially. Everything else underground has been done. And there is no off-site power required for that. It's power is adjacent to the site. So that one should be done in mid-April, and we will have that well pumping. The other two were the ones that we had to drill this year. And in fact, the Little Pete well has been drilled. The contractor has moved over to the Antelope well site, and their equipment is there. Their drill rig will be there shortly, and they anticipate drilling, I believe, starting this weekend. So they are finishing moving in all of the sound barrier equipment and stuff because they're fairly close to a residential area and a school there, but they will be drilling either this weekend or Monday. And so that's where we are on the drilling of those two. We will still have the site construction and the off-site power, the APS power that we have to bring to each of those sites. And so with the Little Pete site, the site construction, we will be coming to you next week with the award of a bid for the site construction on that. We're opening bids Monday. You will see it Thursday night. We plan on giving the low bidder notice of the award on Friday and moving forward with that project. So that one has a 60-day completion period for substantial completion, which is having the well operational. We've given them 90 days to finish the project, but 60 days for them to make the well operational so that we can use it. And so we're projecting a mid-May completion or substantial completion on that. The Antelope well is obviously a little bit further behind because they are starting drilling on it now. That will typically take about three weeks, and when you include test pumping and other things, we're looking at a month for that. And so that one's projected to be a month behind the Little Pete well, so we're looking at mid-June. So this is best-case scenario with no problems or other delays. As you know, there are delays, and we start, like I said, we started this back in the summer. We've had to do the design for the wells that's below the surface, and that took a while. And then we bid that out, and we did the site work. With the weather that we've had this winter, that, you know, that did delay some of the drilling a little bit and the ability to move some of that big equipment from site to site when you've got a lot of mud on the ground. So where we're going to be on June 1st of this year, if you compare it to June 1 of last year, with the addition of the couple of new wells, and I'm not including the Antelope well in this projection because that'll be maybe a couple of weeks later or a month later. The two new wells, we're looking at 2,000 gallons per minute of additional capacity. Plus, there are a number of other wells that we have repaired and reactivated into our system, giving us about 1,200 gallons per minute. And so you can see that we're close to 3,200 gallons a minute of additional capacity at the start of this peak season, which is equivalent to 4.6 million gallons per day. So comparing that number to what our average day production is in our system, on an average day, it's 5.2 million gallons per day, and on the absolute peak day of the summer, we're looking at 9 million gallons per day. So you can see that we've got a lot of new well capacity available, and so that if we do have issues with other wells that go out of service, we're going to be in really good shape. This is just a summary of the new wells that we're looking at putting online. In that projection, as I mentioned, I did not include the Antelope Park capacity, so as soon as that one comes online, that will add what we believe to be between 350 and 500 gallons per minute. We don't know at this point. We will know probably in about a week after they've started drilling and get down to those depths, they can give us an estimate of how good the formation is looking down there. But the other wells that we have done some either repairs or reactivated, so these wells were not online June 1st last year, and you can see which ones those are. So there's five wells that we brought back into the system or brought back online. Of those, the Middle Robin well is the highest producer, and that one's a 500 gallon a minute well. That one is up in the North Well Field, and when we had the fires run through there last summer, it miraculously did not hit any of our wells. They kind of went around our wells. But at that same time, a couple of days later, that well failed due to some electrical problem, and it took us about a month to a month and a half to get that one back online. And so we're anticipating no problems with that one, but that's additional 500 gallons a minute for that. The other wells are smaller wells ranging between about 150 to 250 gallons per minute So in order to help us get the new wells online prior to the summertime period, you know, we've done a number of things throughout this time period. We've issued some pretty tight construction schedules. We've done some parallel design and construction. We've got overlapping construction contracts and a couple of other things we're looking at doing is an incentive for completing the equipping of the Little Pete well. And I'm going to talk about these a little bit more in detail, and doing some, furnishing some of the equipment as the owner. So talking about the parallel design and construction, so right now, we are in the process of working with APS because they have to design the off-site power and how we're going to get power to the sites. So they're designing it right now, and we are issuing a construction contract for the Little Pete well equipping next week. That will not contain the off-site power. So we will be getting the final off-site power for both Little Pete and Antelope well early next week. We plan to immediately advertise that as a separate project or potentially two separate projects so that those will be working and under construction concurrently with the construction of the Little Pete well equipping. We anticipate that for Little Pete, we're about a half a mile away with power. Realistically, they ought to be able to do that in about a two-week period of time. We're probably going to give them 30 days construction period, but it should be done prior to the contractor who's going to be working on-site. That way, power will be there, and they'll be able to hook up. And so, and then with overlapping construction contracts, as I've mentioned, we are awarding the Little Pete project. We still do not have a pump test done on the Little Pete well. It's constructed, but due to a number of things, and the well drillers are in demand. When you go talk to them, they've got rigs in different places, and sometimes they have to wait for their own equipment to get from a different site and get up here. And we've lost a couple of weeks waiting for the well pumping to occur, the well test pump. So with Little Pete, we don't actually know how much production we're going to get out of that, but we have some good indication from our groundwater hydrogeologist and from the contractor, from both their experience, what they've seen there. They're both anticipating that that's going to be a 1,500 gallon a minute well. We will confirm that because we will be test pumping in about a week at that site. So we've had to make some estimates as far as what we thought the production was going to be, and we have moved forward with sizing the equipment based on that production. And we have talked to APS, and we've said, this is what we think is going to happen. And so all of those things, you know, without knowing exactly what the pumping capacity is, we've made very educated guesses as to how big things need to be and what it needs to look like. And so we've moved forward with design and bidding on that basis. One of the things that you're going to see in the award next week for Little Pete is that we have put an incentive in the contract for the contractor to meet an early completion date, and that incentive is going to be 2.5% of the value of the contract. We expect that contract is going to be in the range of $1 million, so we're giving them an incentive of $25,000 to hit a May 15 deadline. Now, if we don't do that, what happens is, so we award the contractor, you award the contract next Thursday night, okay? We give the contractor notice of award the next day and say, here's the notice of award. You've got the contract. We don't actually issue them the notice to proceed to do the work until they have given us their bonds and all of the paperwork that they need to give us, their insurance, their bonds, and all that. Sometimes that takes a couple of days or a week. We have had cases on projects where they don't get that information back to us for a month. We cannot issue notice to proceed without that paperwork, and the contract date doesn't start until we issue notice to proceed. So if we're giving them a hard date of May 15th to hit, that is basically 60 days after you guys issue the notice of award. And so if they, you know, drag their feet and don't provide us with the contract or with the bond paperwork and everything, it makes it harder for them to meet that date. So we're incentivizing them to speed up all of their processes, potentially work on weekends or whatever they can do if they're interested in getting that bonus. So we put that into the Little Pete contract by addendum as of this afternoon. And then finally, owner-furnished equipment, and this is what segues into the Jacobs Amendment. By pre-purchasing some of the equipment, we can knock a significant amount of time off of how long it takes us to get this equipment here. So for example, with the Little Pete project, we have given them essentially eight weeks, two months, to get to substantial completion. Some of the equipment can take six to 12 weeks just to get it on-site once the contractor orders it. Well, right there, you've already blown your contract. So we have ordered some of the equipment ahead of time. And what that does, even with ordering equipment this week, we've got this week now where the equipment is under production. Next week, prior to you guys awarding that, it's under production. If we lose a week... If we lose a week before they get us back the documentation for us to, for notice to proceed, we lose another week. When they finally start moving forward, they have to provide us with submittals saying, okay, based on your specifications, here's all the equipment we're going to order, here's the catalog sheet from the manufacturer. They submit that to us, our engineer reviews it, we either approve it, or we find problems, and we tell them, no, this doesn't work, you've got to add this. We lose another week or two. So even by purchasing this equipment this week, we cut three to five weeks off of the procurement time for that equipment. So if we were at 12 weeks, we're now down to seven, if we're down, if we were at six weeks, we're now down to one. And so that brings us to, I think, yes, okay, so in order to, in order to pre-purchase the equipment, we have to do that without following the bidding requirements, the low-bid requirements, and we can do that as an emergency purchase through the Town Code 3-04-60, and so we have, we have followed that procedure, and in working with the town manager and the mayor, we've been given that direction and authorization to move forward. We have told Jacobs, on our behalf, to order certain equipment that had a long lead time, and so that's now in process. So most of the equipment that we're ordering is electrical-type equipment, the, what they call the service entrance section, the variable frequency drive, those are two of the big ones, and those pieces of equipment are between $30,000 and $60,000 apiece. All of the equipment that we've looked at for pre-purchasing for the Little Pete well site is on the order of $225,000 to $250,000. We anticipate a similar amount for the Antelope Park well, but it may be a little bit less because of the difference in the capacity being, one, we're looking at potentially 1,500 gallons a minute, the other one 500 gallons a minute, less power required, smaller equipment, smaller prices. And so, what we need to do at this point then would be to do a contract amendment with Jacobs, and that would be coming before you next week for your approval. And that would be for authorizing them to purchase equipment up to $600,000. They have agreed to do that for us with zero markup to the equipment, so no added fee. Normally, you have a contractor, you know, acting as your bank or processing equipment for you, you're going to look at a, you know, a 5%, 6%, 7% tack-on, and with normal subcontractors, they're going to look at 10% or 15% tack-on, so they are proposing 0% on this, you know, they've worked with us on other things, they're good partners for us, and we will be paying for that through our capital budget, similarly to if we had awarded it as part of the low-bid So in a nutshell, I think that's it. If I've left anything out, I apologize, and I will take any questions you might have.
Any questions, comments?
With us providing the products that we're ordering, does the standard warranty still apply? Because I know, like, when you do that, like, I order a fireplace, and then I expect a contractor to put it in, a lot of times, they don't want a warranty, something that someone else has provided. Is that going to be an issue in any way?
No, we will have the warranties through the equipment manufacturers, so typically, you know, a lot of times, if something like that fails, we would have typically a two-year warranty under the, under the contract, but it would also depend on why it failed, you know, whether it was an electrical issue based on a storm event that we had, which, you know, that obviously wouldn't be covered, but the manufacturers will stand behind their equipment.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will move on to our final number adjournment. Any questions or comments before we adjourn?